I have six of us, so let's go ahead and get started with, uh, I'm gonna call the September nineteenth Committee of the Whole Meeting order at six oh three P M. Ms. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Walters?
Here.
Alderman Scott?
Here.
Alderman Asia?
He'll be late.
Alderman Hayden?
Here.
Alderman Myers?
He's here.
Alderman Emerson?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Haven't heard from her.
Alderman Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Memes?
Present.
Alderman Krezak?
She's running late.
Okay.
All right, we have a quorum. We'll look at your minutes from the August fifteenth Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, and let me know if we have a motion. A motion for the minutes for the August fifteenth Committee of the Whole.
Second. Second.
Ms. Hayden, you have first, second by Ms. Memes. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Memes?
Yes.
Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
I'm going to vote yes, even though I did miss the first five minutes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Right, motion passes. So we will now move to number two, which is the fiscal year twenty four budget discussion. And what do you have for us? Damon Hodge?
Yes, good evening. Hope everyone has their draft budget book with them, hopefully. Uh, I have myself, uh, along with our finance department, Michael Graham and John Bells, along with all the leadership.
Can I interrupt you just for a minute? So this is a little bit quicker when we start asking questions and everybody's walking up here so they're recording. Will everybody move forward for this session, please?
Yeah.
Except for the police officers, at least one of you stay back in the back.
Well, hopefully I may be able to answer the questions.
Back anyway. Anybody that's gonna be up here testifying or or giving us any kind of information, if you'd move forward? Sorry about that. I want to take five minutes between each time we have a question from somebody. Okay.
Yeah, hopefully I can answer the questions, though. Uh, so let's get started. We go with the first page there, uh, your memo page, uh, that's in the, uh, the very first page. Uh, it's written to you, uh, from Michael Graham, kind of gives a summary of some of the increases within our budget. Uh, one of the first ones is our general fund. Uh, as you can see, there was an increase, uh, for the revenues, but it's really kind of offset by your expenditures. Uh, so the highlighted portion is the increase of about one point eight million. Uh, but on the backside, we're utilizing a lot of that to go out to do our, our, um, revenues, our expenditures. I'll explain more as we get towards the portion where we're gonna talk about, uh, because that's going back and forth regarding our, uh, storm project on Fifty-Ninth Street. Uh, the next one is kind of a similar, similar situation with park fund. Uh, you see the revenues increased, but then you see expenditures are about the same. Uh, that's another one where you got the project where you have to have the, show the revenue of your grant funds that you received, and then show the expenditures of those grant funds going back out. Uh, the other, the next page, uh, pretty much everything is pretty similar. Uh, you got a net sales on your transportation sales tax, along with your capital sales tax, and I'll explain more of those as we go further on into the, uh, the budget itself, so. Uh, another area I wanted to point out too is the stormwater sales tax. Uh, that's another one example of your, uh, revenue that's increased. Uh, and that's the M D N R grant, and I'll explain more of that when we get further into the, to the budget, so. Let's go ahead and go further in the budget. Let's do it that way. Ultimately, your budget here was created, uh, based on a two percent COLA, uh, for the staff. Other than that, and there's not much of a difference from a typical, we try to ask everyone to try to remain as flat as possible, uh, realizing that we wanted to try to utilize funding to do some capital projects. So when you start to get in your, uh, your dedicated funds, you'll see where those capital projects are at. Uh, your first is an agency-wide summary that's in each of your budgets. Uh, there you have what your revenues are. Uh, so it goes everything from your property tax, your franchise tax. And this, these items here go typically, uh, your general sales tax, your other taxes, your grants, your license, your total revenues. And then on the, on that far, uh, far right of the page, it tells you your total amount. Uh, and that, the last one there, uh, transfer into other funds, uh, that's including your other items that might come in in order to, uh, from your stormwater, your TIF, things like that, to give you a total amount about, total revenue is about forty-one million point nine, forty-one point nine million. But then you're on your next lines, that's when you start looking at your expenditures, your personal services, supplies, your repairs and maintenance, utilities, capital expenditures, uh, all your different appropriations. And that totals about forty-four million point eight, forty-four point eight million. So we already know that if you're receiving revenue of forty-one point nine, but you're expending forty-four point eight, that you have to go into your, your, uh, uh, fund balance in order to make that goal. So your next part kind of gives you that, what that fund balance area is. And if you look at the bottom portion, your last three lines, you start to see the items in parentheses, and it shows you where you're going into your fund balance in different areas. So your first one is your general fund, uh, you're going into your fund balance for about nine hundred thousand. Your next one is your parks, uh, which is a, um, uh, a revenue strictly just for parks. Uh, and it's going in about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. These are, I can explain more as we go into each of those actual funds, but this gives you a good synopsis. So someone calls you, asks you a question about that, this is a good synopsis page to kind of show you what the expected revenues are, what your expected expenditures are, and then where, where you go at as far as taking out of fund balance. Any questions thus far? All right. Your next couple of pages there talks about your general revenues. I may go to maybe one, two, the third page. Should look like it says general revenues and it gives you twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two actual, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three projected, and then twenty-three, twenty-four budget. That's the sheet I'm looking at right now. So that sheet there breaks it down per a, uh, fund, or actually per revenue line of different, everything from our real estate property tax, our personal property tax, I'll be down to the penalties to your franchise taxes. But it's a good snapshot of what's happened over the past couple of years. Uh, one, it tells you what your actual was based off your audit amounts, uh, for your twenty-one, twenty-two. And the next one gets into twenty-two, twenty-three, which is a current budget. You won't have that actual until we actually do our audit amount, which we do every year, and we bring to you all typically around June mid-year, uh, after it's done, but we have an auditor comes in, I give you those actual amounts. But there, you get to kind of get an idea of what the budget it may be, and then what we're expecting to go forward. Let's go to our next part, um, administration. The first, the next few will be all out of our general fund, other than, other than your, uh, parks, sales tax and property tax. You'll, I'll make sure I'll, I'll point that out to you, but your first one will be a general fund regarding administration. Uh, regarding that one, um, she can see on your first sheet, no changes as far as employees, same amount, seven that we had before. You do see a change in the personnel services as far as the overall amount. Uh, and that was after the salary study going for actual full year, along with the two percent COLA. Uh, but for the most part, uh, try to remain as flat as possible with that one. That, uh, that administration budget is one that seven employees include myself, uh, along with our assistant C A, along with, um, Michael, Teresa, Debbie, and Tony. So those are seven employees in that department. On your next sheet, um, ours are pretty straightforward, uh, majority of them is, is salary. You see the difference, we gave you the difference from last year to this year, uh, and that amount of difference is, majority of that is all in a difference in salary. Questions on that? That's one administration. You will see a difference in majority of our, our departments because of the salary study, bringing everybody up to what that salary study was, and then probably the two percent, which add a little bit more to that. Your next one is citywide. Now, citywide is just like it sounds. Um, and I know many of you understand this, I'm saying that because for those who may be not here today, but might be watching later, explain where these different funds are. It's general fund, but it's citywide. This one stands out, uh, mainly because these are items that affect a citywide, and one of those first items that we, you'll see there's a change, uh, is, uh, under personnel services. You see it went from three hundred and ninety-four thousand down to twenty-four thousand. Well, if you remember, um, last year, we budgeted with the ARPA funds to pay for that, um, retention, uh, retention amount that we paid, so we paid that out this past year. Get a little closer every now and then, so that why, that's why you see the change in that amount. So the next one that you see, uh, that you'll see is in professional services. It went from fifty-three thousand to a hundred and thirty-seven. Well, that hundred and thirty-seven, seventy-five thousand of that is for the staffing study, uh, that was asked for, so we put that in the budget. That's a change from what you saw prior before. Did that be too close? The other, the next few line items are pretty much the same as they were last year. Um, then the last one will be your contractual services, uh, which is expense category five-three-nine-nine-nine. Uh, you'll see a significant change from forty thousand to one hundred and eighty-five. Well, a hundred and twenty thousand of a hundred and eighty-five is for our comprehensive plan. Uh, so those are the two major ones, a staffing study and a comprehensive plan that you see as far as a change to those, those amounts of services. I will add that, um, the Mark Household Hazardous Waste Program, I know Alderman Emerson is very excited about having that one in there. It's been asked for for quite some time. Uh, we have it in at thirty thousand, but recently I've talked to them, it may be more like thirty-five thousand, so, uh, they don't have the actual numbers out just yet, but I'm gonna check with them again, so that may change before we do the final budget up to thirty-five thousand. It's based off your population times a particular factor, and that's divided amongst all the jurisdictions that utilize that program.
Which program they utilize?
Uh, the household hazardous waste, this is a program that's offered by Mark in their solid waste, uh, group. Uh, we have never been a part of it, um, something we've been trying to get, decide what it is, is allow you as residents to be able to take everything from pesticides, old paint, um, you know, things that you sometimes get poured down our storm or our sanitary sewer system, to take those and remediate those in a proper fashion. Uh, the other portion that comes with that is you are allowed, uh, typically you have one done on your city, on your, within your city premises. Uh, that's another good portion of it, to allow people to be able to get rid of those items. Um, uh, they have two locations, one is, um, on Forty-seventh and Duramus, the other one is in Lee Summit.
My question before you go any further, when you talked about the staffing assessment, the budget piece, is that in the twenty-three or the twenty-four?
That's in the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Now, you were talking about the, the locations for the hazardous waste materials, and the first one was where?
Uh, Forty-seventh and Duramus, Forty-seven oh one Duramus, it's near Front Street and, uh, near, uh, Missouri River.
Okay, wasn't sure where that was at. Can we currently utilize the one in Lee Summit?
Uh, you cannot, understanding that, uh, we try to do it where we can do pay as we go. Uh, you may be able to pay as a citizen, but I was told last time we could not, because they don't have enough capacity to add more people to it without paying it within the program itself.
Without getting into the program?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
The other portion you'll see is the operating transfers, so that portion.
Just second, I think Ms. Hayden hit something.
Sure.
Turn on your question, turn on your mic, please.
No, you can ask him anytime.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna go back to the hazardous, hazardous waste, um, thing, so that's something that we're gonna plan to do in twenty twenty-four. Is it gonna be like our, our recycle thing where it's one big day and we'll bring it all in, or are we gonna issue coupons?
No, it's a actual program that you, you pay for, and then each resident has to take their driver's license to that location, and whenever they go and get rid of the hazardous waste, so it's a, we're, we're paying for operations to be part of that, well, allow us to be part of operation. Uh, there is a one-time, um, uh, item where they may come and do it at your city, and that's once, once a year, per, um, if they have staffing available for that. Uh, but for the most part, you're able to go as a citizen throughout the year, as long as they're open. I think they're open from like nine to three, and then sometimes on weekends, things like that, so.
I know that when I went to, when we had the, um, the recycle event, a lot of people were asking for that.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good service, but they're allowing us to get into it now for, for just the thirty thousand dollars, because it was.
Yeah.
What did you say, eight dollars per?
Uh, yeah, it was pretty high as far as if you try to do it, uh, on your own.
Yeah.
Uh, so this one here we pay for the entire, so anyone who with, has a city license, uh, but once we get in the program, we'll, we'll go ahead and put that information out to the citizens on how they can go, where they need to go in order to dispose of their, uh, household hazardous waste.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be good.
Because if you got a garage, I can tell you my own, you know, a lot of things on your floor that you should not pour down a sink, pour down a storm sewer, or put in a toilet. Um, so that's, that's subjective, but trying to get that.
On that, to follow up on, uh, Alderman Hayden, is that for Raytown residents only?
Raytown residents only, now, it's a collaborative, uh, it's paid for by ourselves and other entities that opt into that. I think the last time I saw that list, it could have been, I don't know, thirty cities, uh, but it's quite a few that's involved. And they've been after us to try to join for quite some time.
Is for?
Yes, just Raytown only. Uh, your next.
The reason that we didn't do it before was because the number of people that were using it was very small, so we would be paying thirty thousand dollars for a very small amount of people using it. So now that there is more demand and prices stayed about the same, it looked like it was something that we needed to go ahead and start doing. That's why we've moved forward with it now compared to years past.
Yep. The other one at the bottom, um, of that fund is shows your operating transfers, so, um, one of the ones that stand out to you should be the stormwater of two million. Uh, so that two million, uh, when you go to the storm side and once we explain more there, uh, that's part of the project. You know, we have worked with, uh, Senator Washington and, and, uh, all right, about a year or so ago, and asked, talked to her, I know Alderman Myers and others who went down to the, you know, visited legislation day. Um, we went and talked to him about needs, and, uh, at the time, the ARPA funds was, was trying to look to see how they're gonna distribute it throughout the state. Uh, well, make a law story sure, one of the projects that came about, or one of the grant opportunities came about was Mark, was through M D N R, Missouri Department of Natural Resources. And we applied for that, uh, from three different categories, and, uh, we were the ones who received the one for the storm. That was about four point, uh, just one, four point five, four point three million, four point three million, uh, to do a eighty-twenty on the stormwater project. Uh, and, um, so we received that, well, part of that is also we gotta provide a match, and part of providing our match is about one point eight. Uh, and so you always see a, like you saw last year, a hundred and fifty thousand, we always do a transfer into our storm, uh, budget anyway for that, actually, operations. Uh, but this one here is also includes, uh, that one point eight million, so that's why you see that go from a hundred and fifty thousand to two million. Uh, the first department we'll have is our community development department. We try to go in alphabetical order on our documents there. And from that presentation, we had, uh, there's really not many changes from the original, uh, departmental presentation. Uh, ultimately, there's a, um, decrease, I mean, increase, uh, between F Y twenty-three to F Y twenty-four on your personnel services, and a slight increase on your, uh, supplies and services, but for the most part, uh, it's been pretty flat budget-wise for that, for community development. They're not adding any employees, but they have made some changes internally. Uh, one thing I want to give is kudos to them in their, uh, and what they've done with our Habitat Humanity and our, uh, home repair program. Uh, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we, we actually were debating at this time if we weren't gonna keep the program or not, uh, mainly because we just weren't getting enough people to even, uh, qualify or even work on the program. And, uh, one of the initiatives you all had for us, uh, was to try to decrease the amount of home, uh, of code, and part of that was trying to help people with, with what they have to do at their home. A lot of people, it's not that they don't want to do better, is this, really don't have the money or the resources to do better. And, uh, this program with Habitat Humanity, I could say now that we not only fulfilled and spent all the money that was budgeted last year, but we also have a waiting list, and, uh, that says a lot for Diane and her department, uh, when they go and talk, uh, and also working with court, uh, that they try to give them information, uh, regarding that program, and Habitat Humanity has done a good job of trying to work with us on that program, so, um, that's, that's been a really good opportunity to give back to our citizens with that budget, so. Any questions?
Is this the one where the one lady this, that I sent that you guys are working on? Thank God, I just wanted to make sure, because it was really something that was really needed, and I want to thank you all, not only for just taking care of it, but y'all jumped on it the same day that it was brought to me.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you don't mind, as you go on, could you give me a little briefing of where she's at with it? Because she's still seeing, uh, she's going through treatments and stuff on top of.
No problem.
Thank you.
We can do that, and, and we've done everything from, um, roof repairs to, uh, windows, doors, a little bit of everything, and, and payments. And I don't know why this keeps telling this to me. I think Michael's in the back just deciding. So, uh, that gives you any questions on community development, so.
Anybody kind of questions on this? All right, next?
Uh, next, we have, we have court. So court, uh, it's pretty similar to community development in that there's not a huge change in it. Uh, there was no changes from our, our, um, earlier presentation, um, uh, regarding, one of the things that probably stand out is, um, the judge has asked for a, uh, some security, uh, features, one of them is a scanner, uh, for people to walk through. Uh, so we've kind of looked at the budget-wise to see if we can go towards that direction. You'll see it in two different locations, one is here, thirty-five thousand for a security metal, for a metal detector, uh, and that's the actual staffing of the metal detector. The other one you'll see in the capital side is run around thirty thousand, uh, for the installation of a potential mobile metal detector that will come out during court time and go back in. Uh, we still got some things to work on regarding that one, as far as what, what that would look like, but we do have it in the budget to try to look forward this year.
I know I got nine and ninety different questions for you, but, uh, for the judge, do she have a stun gun up here with her? I've just got a stun gun on this side, no, seriously, I'm being serious, because I've walked in her courtroom several times and she can tell you. Yeah.
She doesn't have a stun gun, but she does have an officer with a loaded weapon.
All right, that's all I want to make sure, because it's been some, it's been some, uh, serious stuff happening in her room.
Yeah.
Turn on your microphone, please.
Is that equipment listed under professional service? Where's that list? Because I just noticed that professional service.
Yes, the professional services is for a potential to pay for the person that would occupy, uh, whenever you have that. The actual equipment is not gonna be later until you see it in the capital, capital sales tax budget.
Okay, all right, so it's not listed here?
It's not listed here.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, Damon, I have a question. And, and I, I don't, I've never run a court, I've been to a couple, but, um, is it, not that many? Is it possible to do something to construct where you basically have a barricade between the court and the people so that they can still see each other? Because this looks like an ongoing cost going forward, and maybe you wouldn't have that much expense, but it would be just to save, that's what I'm thinking. Because to me, I, I see if you're gonna be having a, you're scanning people at the door, you're gonna have to have at least one person, maybe two, you know, to make sure that everybody's coming in clean without any, um, material they shouldn't have on them. Um, if you were to have some way to, to do a partition to where, you know, people could see the judge, the judge could see them, they could carry the trial on that way, you wouldn't have all that expense. And you wouldn't have to worry about somebody being able to find a way to get past the system.
Are you, because this is.
Go ahead.
I think, I'm spitballing. Excuse me for interrupting, but the judge is shaking her head no, and I know why, you want to step up here and address this? Because I, I'm with you, Judge, that, that would never work.
I think the issue with that would be, we have so much paperwork going back and forth from people, if they come in and they plead guilty, they're put on probation, they have forms and things of that nature that they're required to sign, and there's a lot of back and forth between court staff and the actual litigants. So it would almost be impossible. Yeah, that would almost be impossible to have a system like that.
I can see you'd have to build an annex to put in offices for that. Okay, I understand.
Well, if she's putting somebody in custody, either the police have to get around there and get them, and then if somebody, if somebody would pull a gun or a knife, whatever, they still can get past that, so it.
Well, and you're still endangering everyone else that's in the, in the room. It's not just me, the staff, it's all the litigants, all the witnesses, you know, that, they would be at risk as well.
I see, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Van Busker?
So you don't want a barricade just for the attorneys? I'm sorry.
Barricade for the attorneys? Anybody else have a question for the judge? If you're gonna speak, please make sure, this is a meeting, we need to make sure our microphones are on.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say.
You're not the only one, it's just.
She can handle.
Yeah. Okay, next, please.
Uh, your next one you have is, uh, general fund for finance. Uh, it goes back to pretty much what we had before, uh, the change, it was no significant change from our, our department presentation. In fact, this is one of the ones where the personnel services went down. Uh, we did have some other items there, you will notice a, uh, a, uh, a crease to the audit portion is pretty small. Uh, we know that, that cost has gone up, mainly cost of labor costs have gone up. Uh, later on, you'll see where we have a portion there, uh, you know, one of the things that Michael Graham has said, since we've started this budget process, which is the first one for him, is we should look at doing a actual budgeting software that would help streamline, right now, we do everything off a spreadsheet. And if you ever dealt with spreadsheets, and you can imagine what you have just to do this in general, um, if you make one, I'm not gonna talk about that, because we've seen that already in some other areas. If you, if you put one in one area wrong, that can affect what you have, so, uh, there are softwares out there that can help us with that scenario, so. Uh, it's something that we're looking at trying to do in this upcoming year. Um, I wanted him to go through the process that we currently have and, uh, utilize his knowledge, uh, and along with the other staff. Uh, he's hired some staff since he's been aboard. Uh, we've hired an accountant with experience, we also just hired a payroll clerk that's gonna do both payroll and help us with H R, because you all have heard me say in the past, we have one person in H R that's under, under, um, administration, uh, but there's things there that could be useful, uh, and they do a lot of cross-function work. Uh, so since he's been aboard, he's been able to hire both of those staff members along with itself, so, um, ultimately, this would be that opportunity to move forward.
So, Michael, this would, just so make it simple for everybody, this would help you and John.
Yeah, historically, like he's, like Damon said, it was all based on Excel spreadsheets. Um, the difference between that and the software would be that the software could historically keep everything in one system, where we've got multiple years of spreadsheets after spreadsheets that we're trying to either link, or somebody's used a different name. This way, everything is gonna be common from year to year.
And make it probably easier to, uh, adjust anything, need to be adjusted as we go along, and, and those kind of things with the budget.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
This man.
Of course, knowing your work, this will keep you from having to go over here and jump back over here. And go around and you'll have it all categorized.
Yes.
When is this software going to be in the budget for twenty three or twenty four?
It's twenty four.
Thank you.
Yeah, your next one you have is uh governing body. So governing body, uh, that's you guys. Got eleven uh on there. So uh, you've seen a slight increase uh that's based off of the uh, you know, this past summer. Uh, when the uh committee for uh your salaries made that. Made a change and you guys voted that in. So that's what the increase is that you see there. Not much there.
Anybody?
Your next one you have is law. The major portion of that is with our uh attorney, uh, lobbler municipal. I have in there one forty five. Uh, since then, I've received an increased amount from them as for their hourly costs. So we will be increasing that to one fifty five. Based on where we are right now. Um, their hourly costs increased uh this year. Um, so we will have to look at other. We probably have to look at other options in the future. Uh, but as far as right now, that's what we have.
Mr. Mayor, is this, is this for, this for the prosecutor or is this for our city attorney?
This is both. The prosecutor is under agreement, so that's set. Uh, the city attorney, which is the majority porter, that that's a hundred and fifty thousand of a hundred and eighty is her, it's a lobbler municipal.
Mr. Walter.
That's what I was going to ask. We're paying a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our legal.
Not, not just a lobbler. Lobbler is right around a hundred and twenty, but part of this is also for our city, our uh city.
One twenty, one twenty and sixty.
Yeah. Well, no, he's uh, he's about thirty five.
About thirty five?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, next.
Uh, your next one you have is your police department. Uh, the police budget. Police budget is also is really combined with two, your general fund and your public safety sales tax. As you can see, it's further back into your, in your manual. Uh, as far as between uh where we presented this past summer, there's not much of a change. A majority of the changes were, were within the salary changes. Um, other than that, one of the things we brought out back then was uh the marketing uh that. Uh, chief and they're working on uh for the upcoming year as far as recruitment. Uh, you know, one of the things been asked about is the salaries and hiring. I mean, ultimately, we put in a budget, will be, will we expect to be, try to hire budget wise as far as amount of employees. But that amount is set there in order for us to try to hire those employees. And so uh, if that doesn't go. Um, falls to the fund balance. Uh, but uh, for us, we want to try to fill those positions. And I. As far as uh the next steps on trying to hire, uh, we're doing everything from attending um. Hiring fairs, both Public Works and Police Department. Um, to uh, we're going to be working on other opportunities. I'll let chief, once he has that put together, I don't want to steal his thunder. Uh, he's looking at trying to hire a consultant that would help us with that recruiting process as well. Uh, as we said, we're all kind of going through the same hunting ground. Probably not the best word to use on that one. The same um employee, same employee pool. Uh, within this region and uh from talking to other city managers, we're all kind of going through the same scenario. I think every police department maybe except for about two or, or short staffed, so. Something we got to go through, but we're not just thinking right now, we're thinking about what we can do outside of this. Um, uh, everything from working in universities to doing other programs outside of city limits.
Anyone?
Yes. How many officers we have right now?
Oh, I don't have that.
Can we like? Do that, bro.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Uh, but I, I could tell you what we have.
That's okay. Okay, because I had something in my head.
Yeah.
And you're right.
Budget wise, we have sixty two uh positions. Caught out from general fund and then we'll have more in that.
Okay.
Thank you for understanding.
Thank you. I'll come back.
All right, Public Works is our uh. Next one. Again, no significant changes. You would notice in Public Works, uh, they're combined. Uh, the positions are both shown in in general fund as well as your sanitary sewer fund. Uh, which pays for some of your public staff along with finance staff. So uh, there on the general side, it's not a, uh, most of the increases in salary. The other increase you'll notice is streetlights. Uh, I think a few of y'all have asked me about streetlights in the past. Uh, we're working with uh Evergy. We met with them last week to talk about potential increase in the streetlight grid. Uh, many of you may not know that streetlights come based off tariffs. So we have a grid here of combined from everything from O K C P and all lights, lights that we own. Lights that was owned by, what was the other group? That was before Evergy. Uh, but owned by different groups. So now they're coming together and we want to try to figure out how to expand that street grid.
So there is a possibility that. Now that they're Evergy, we might get some more lights.
There is, there is, so um.
Good, that's good to hear.
Yes.
Do we have a?
Mr. Walter.
Yes, I was going to ask, do we have a timeline on that?
We do not. Uh, but we do, we have started going down that road with them to talk to them. Uh, ultimately, we're waiting to hear back from them on their plan to show us how that would look like as far as expansion of the grid. Uh, so they're working on that as we speak.
Thank you.
Ms. Emerson.
Uh, yes, I had a question. Vince, um, they have the biggest part of the city works. Is that a pri- pri- a pri- proprietary, sorry, proprietary program?
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, and it's a program that's used a lot as far as their own product that they provide.
Well, my problem is we're going to be spending probably a half a million dollars before we get this done. And what happens if we decide we don't want to use it and we lose half of our information?
Sure, so we have already went down the road with and actually your study session will be showing you more on that. Ottawa Emerson, as far as what's been done thus far, uh, as far as the uh. Any product you may have, you may have to do some spending upfront, uh, but we're at a point now to where we're utilizing the product uh on a daily basis. And uh, the upcoming study session will give you more explanation as far as how it's being used. Uh, it's been used by both Public Works and the Parks Department. Uh, it's used, used by our fleet to help with fleet management as long, as well as other asset management.
Okay, I'm still quite concerned about it, but okay, thanks.
All right, next.
Next one is our parks fund. Uh, if you notice, that one is, looks a little bit different than the rest of them, mainly because it's a dedicated fund to only parks. Um, uh, you have everything from the personnel to capital expenditures all within that fund itself. Uh, as mentioned before, one of the biggest things and one, one thing I could say that Dave has done a great job at, him and his staff. Is uh seeking out opportunities to get grants and other items to help offset the costs of, of anything they may have as far as projects. And um, one of the ones that's coming up, he's already started on the fifty third street project. Uh, and started going back as far as requesting reimbursement on that one. A couple of years back, when you all had talked to Parks Department, one of the things they were saving their funds uh to do a major project. And they're moving forward that major project as we speak.
Anyone have a question on this? Just Hayden.
I just want to say kudos to Dave and um and the board for all the grant money and all the things that you guys are doing. Great job. Yeah.
Very good. Damon, before you go forward, are you going to go through all these tabs?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm down to probably about the last.
What I was going to do is like we talked about earlier, is if they had any specific questions, so. Um, we got about eighteen minutes before we have to start the next meeting, so. Let's go ahead and move forward and then if we get to a certain point, I'll have, if anybody has any exact questions.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, does the park fund have the tax coming up? Is it this year or next year?
Thank you.
Uh, all right, the parks sales tax, one eighth and, one eighth cent sales tax uh will expire in March of twenty twenty six. Uh, we would have to be, get a vote passed in uh late twenty twenty five to not have a funding gap there. So that has to take place at the latest in twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Dave. Go ahead.
Oh, no problem. Uh, your next one you have is your capital sales tax. Uh, that's the one we use for items within the, within the city that are pretty much citywide, but it's broken out. Um, that's going back to Autumn Woman Hayden's question. Uh, you see the court security improvements there. The thirty thousand is in that one. Along with a couple of items here at, at City Hall, one of them is a rail that needs to be replaced. Uh, some landscaping improvements there and then uh, uh, some improvements to the community development counter. Right now, when you. If you go there, they're pretty much, they need to have a place where they can meet with people and actually um, sit down, lay out the plans, things of that sort. Uh, the other one is a Sally Fort. Um, it's a trench drain in the front that's causing flooding in the garage. Uh, that over long term is continuing to cause more damage than what it needs. And so uh, it's, it's over the years, it's kind of got filled in, so we need to replace it um and do that improvement there. Your next portion, uh, as you go further down, is pretty standard, our vehicle replacement and workstation replacement portions. Uh, along with a couple of pieces of equipment there from a bobcat to our uh, to a large plow truck. We have a sternly plow truck is probably the largest item there. Uh, that has uh no longer supplied it. Uh, so the ports, we can't get the parts and we've been trying to place. One every couple of years as they go because we don't want them to be down at the time, so. You're also pretty familiar with the fact that uh with logistics as far as ordering vehicles nowadays, we got to move sooner than later. Uh, the, the window's pretty short, but the long, the duration of uh delivery is pretty long. I'm gonna go to, go to sewer fund, kind of looking at the time. The other funds were pretty straightforward. Um, sewer fund as well. The amounts that you hear, see here for the sewer is based off a zero percent increase. Uh, you hear later on, you have this sewer rate increases on your agenda, an upcoming meeting. But as you get back towards the, the final sheet there. Uh, want to look at this capital expenditures, uh, projects that we're looking at doing this upcoming year. Uh, currently, we're finishing up with our sanitary sewer maintenance and replacement program. Uh, this was the second year we done that. Uh, this, this upcoming budget would be our third year in a row. Uh, we spend it right around one point three to one point five million each year on try to do some sewer replacement programs. We have this upcoming year, we got it estimated about one point three uh with some other items that may, may be required, so it's pretty. Pretty straightforward, but it's a program that we've been able to support uh over the past few years. Uh, one thing I want to kind of, I want to point out too. Is as you do those programs, it does eat into your fund balance. So that's why we try to do, we'll be as frugal as possible, but I also want to understand it. We're looking for the long range because we want to have a fund balance in case we have to do anything that's maybe emergency wise. And so when you see at the bottom of your detailed summary sheet, the fourteen million, that is not cash, that is assets. So assets makes that looks like a larger number. That's not cash on hand. When you look at the two point four million, that's more about what you're looking at. As far as funds. Uh, your next one is your uh storm. Uh, that goes back to the project I mentioned in fifty ninth street project that where we did right about five million dollar, five point two million dollar project. Uh, where we got the grant for uh to do that portion. Uh, and that was one of the projects that we intended on. That was going to be the first project when we look at the bonds. Uh, but it was great that we were able to receive uh the grant from uh M D N R. Which took almost five million dollars, I mean, four point three million off the plate, so. Um, now we're looking at other projects. We actually had the R F, uh, refresh qualifications out. Uh, for a designer to, to work on the other projects with our capital improvement plan.
Anyone?
But you see the uh one point eight plus the four point three, which is the amount for that.
Anyone have anything on this?
And I'll be open for any questions.
All right. Mr. Bambusker.
Uh, this exhaust, that, that's for the.
Where are we looking at, Ottoman?
For the garage itself and so.
Capital.
Yeah, you can, you can operate in there safely and.
Yes.
And get rid of the exhaust with the.
Yes. Yes, uh, especially with vehicles, we bring them inside, especially in the winter time. And we need an exhaust fan that operates correctly for our.
Okay, I think that's really needed. Thank you.
Ms. Bims.
I just want to make sure, and what does our reserves look like uh for this year and compare, well, in the comparison from last year?
Yes.
And if we look like we're doing okay and that uh our budgeted expenditures last year and how much they were compared to this year.
Yes, I mean, we've done a good job on our spending. We try to stay within budget. Uh, one of the things you'll see from that audit that you received is that one of the things they, they give us kudos on is staying within the parameters of our budget. Um, you know, sometimes you uh, you may get projects that might be outside of what you had budgeted for. We create this in August and something may happen in July. Uh, but if we do, I, I've noticed our staff and we direct our staff to try to look at what you have internally within the budget that you have approved to try to do those projects.
Thank you, because that was the next thing, oh, we stand within budgets. And I got a yes down here, so.
Yeah, and as far as our reserves, uh, that summary sheet with the agency wide, uh, we try to, try to stay as much as possible. Stay away from those, achieve those where there are.
Sure, that uh we're not perceived as we're being, not being cognizant of what our funding is like.
Yes.
And that we're staying within it, just in case we come up on short funds and our funding started to decrease. That we able to stay within and be able to handle everything that you got planned.
Definitely. And a, a good one is the example of sanitary sewer, when it costs to operate that. Uh, you know, that's when we do a project, now we need to look at, what do we do to keep that fund balance to where if something goes wrong, we got at least six months worth of reserves to do something.
Yeah, and Emerson.
Yes, well, my only question is, I didn't see this in the budget. I just wanted to verify that you haven't added no new. Employees into the budget.
No. No.
Okay, thank you.
Am I missing anyone? One, take that back, was one in police department.
Say one.
One employee. Sorry.
And which one is that?
Uh, what position was that? Yes, we had made a property a full-time position, which was a part-time position, made it to one full-time position. Property and uh, that we have in the police department. Uh, the person that was part-time retired uh and uh, in order to keep up with what we have, we decided to make it a full-time position. So that's one added full-time position.
And it was a, a part-time before that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else?
No, that'd be it for me.
All right. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Some more.
This man, second by Rita Hayden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? All right, we are adjourned at six fifty P M.